Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our 2020 organizational meeting. I request a, I'm going to call the meeting to order and request a roll call.
Mr. Gilmour?
Here.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Darrow?
Here.
Please stand to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great hope for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is to swear in our newly elected board members. And so, Mr. Gilmour, Mr. Darrow, if you could please step to the front. Ms. Jenkins will administer your vote of the box.
Move to the center so you're centered with the picture.
I told you.
How do you take the picture?
All right. Do you, Mr. Darrow and Mr. Gilmour, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education, then and for the said New Albany Plain Local School District, Franklin County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here active to be enacted during the continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified?
I do. Yes. Yeah.
No, I didn't want to photo bomb, so I'll try the slide.
Okay, so for the new board for this year, we are now up to the election of officers. And the first office is the Office of Board President. So we will now open the floor for nominations for that office.
Sir, I would like to nominate John McCollum for Board President. I believe that John continues to serve the district very well as president of the board. He collaborates really well with all of us sitting up here. I think he's done a really nice job of partnering with Superintendent Sawyers, the administration, and Lee. And he also works very well with the broader New Albany community and the city leaders. Under our current board structure, the district continues to improve and achieve very challenging goals. And in my opinion, based on the overall success that we're experiencing as a district, continuity is very important and the correct and prudent approach. So I think having John continue to serve as Board President is in the best interests of the community and our students. Thank you. Start the long-winded nomination.
Nice, thank you.
Give me a second. No seconds, just any other names that would like to be nominated. If there are none, then I'd ask for a motion to close nominations. So, closed by Mr. Darrow. Roll call, please.
And I believe in this case it is a voice vote. You have to say the name of the person.
Right. Mr. Bush?
John McCollum.
Mr. Darrow?
John McCollum.
Ms. Kalanowski?
John McCollum.
Mr. McCollum?
John McCollum.
Mr. Gilmour?
John McCollum.
Do you, Mr. McCollum, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Board of Education in and for the said New Albany Plain Local School District, Franklin County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here active to be enacted during the continuance of your, during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified?
Very much so.
Thank you. Thank you again for those kind words. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Agreed completely.
We are now open for the election of the Office of Board Vice President. So the floor is open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Phil Darrow. I believe that the combination of you and Phil in leadership positions has been very successful for this board. And Phil being elected for his second term with no students in the district shows his selfless passion for improving our schools and contributing to our community. And I personally have really appreciated his vision and strategic leadership. And I think he's an integral part of this board, and I'd like to see him continue in his role.
Any other nominations? With none, I'll request a motion to close nominations.
Mr. Bush? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Bush?
Phil Darrow.
Mr. Darrow?
Phil Darrow.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Phil Darrow.
President McCollum?
Phil Darrow.
Mr. Gilmour?
Phil Darrow.
Congratulations.
Do you, Mr. Darrow, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Board of Education in and for the said New Albany Plain Local School District, Franklin County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here active to be enacted during the continuance, during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified?
Mr. Darrow, anything you'd like to say? Very good.
Gee. Well, I'd like to thank each of you for your support. I truly appreciate it. I've said it before, as much as I love my job at work and have for decades now, this is the best job I've ever had and continue to love it and grateful for the support of the voters in this last election, recognizing I ran unopposed. I still appreciate every one of the votes. Somebody, you know, some people pushed the button, so I am grateful for the support and will continue to work hard to continue to make New Albany schools the best in the state of Ohio.
Thank you. So now to business. We have our several things on the organizational agenda here. The first is our 2020 Board of Meeting, Board of Education meeting schedules. And so there is section four A through C, which includes the regular meetings for 2020, the work sessions for 2020, and then special meetings for the Financial Review and Reporting Committee for 2020. These have all been, I believe, sent around previously to request input. And these are the final dates that are on the, on the agenda. So if I could, please have a motion to accept four A through C.
Someone?
Ms. Kalanowski, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bush? Roll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. We have an opportunity for public participation. And with none, we will move on then to board authorizations. I have a motion on board authorizations six A through, excuse me, also six A through O, so that we can talk about those and then we'll do the motion to appoint.
Someone?
Second.
Mr. Bush? Ms. Kalanowski? Mr. Sawyers?
So the, Ms.
Or Ms. Jenkins?
I'm going to do the first few because they're more treasure-related. So A, B, C, D, E, and F are all just the annual authorizations. The authorize, A to authorize tax advancements is just for us to ask the auditor to send them out before the normal settlement date that they establish each year. That way we have those monies in our deposit and in our interest instead of leaving them with the county auditor's office than just authorizing us to invest money, pay bills, do payroll, and then establish the Board Member Service Fund. Normally that's about $2,000. This board has really never done it, but we're supposed to establish a fund. You've never really used that much of it. None of these board members really travel that much. Anytime that we would use it is maybe for OSBA capital conference, those kinds of things. And then advertisement of bids if we ever are required to bid. That way we don't have to wait for a regular board meeting to get those put up.
Six through O. President McCollum, Board of Education members. Letter G is the authorization, as well as H, for personnel purposes to hire and/or to accept the resignation of personnel from our school district in between your Board of Education meetings or the ability to conduct business within the school district. Letter I is for authorization pursuant to a higher advice code that I've authorized professional development opportunities for teachers that can be approved and worked with the local professional development committee for licensure renewal dominantly. Letter J is to authorize us to participate and comply with all and all requirements associated to federal compliance regulations in order to qualify for federal, state, or local funds. Letter K is to authorize me and/or my designated service of the hearing officer for student disciplinary matters that may require pre-expulsion or expulsion or other discipline-related matters within our school district. Letter L is compliance with federal statute to set the monitoring boost to rate at the federal level on an annual basis once it's published. Letter M provides the opportunity to dispose of or discard or sell textbooks, library books, films, or film strips or equipment, which is the statutory language. We could, in my estimation, eliminate film strips, but it's still part of the ORC requirement. So it is actually the language that we actually publish. Letter N is to provide authorization to engage with a dozen different legal firms. Should it ever be necessary, we approve a laundry list of different types of legal entities to provide services to our school district. And again, we're not under any obligation to use their services. It just authorizes us for the ability to be able to use them in the event or circumstances that warrant their expertise. Letter O is to approve membership for OSBA, as well as participation in the legal fund that's provided by OSBA as part of your authorization to serve as Board Education members and join their association.
Any questions on A through O? With none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. And now to six P and Q. These are the motions to appoint members to different liaison positions and also as delegate alternate to the OSBA Annual Business Meeting, which happens in November. In discussions with, at least a text, text, there's a conversation with everyone. We felt was with, with the idea here of maintaining consistency would be to kind of keep the status quo on those as well. And so just before we accept the motion, the individuals who would be appointed to the different boards or liaisons for board policy would be Ms. Kalanowski for the city government, Mr. Gilmour, township, Mr. Gilmour. For the joint parks district, Mr. Bush. For finance, should be myself and Mr. Bush. For the community business organizations, Mr. Gilmour and Mr. Darrow. For our parent liaison, Ms. Kalanowski. And then for our legislative liaison would be Mr. Darrow. And then to appoint the delegates and alternates to the OSBA Business Meeting, the delegate would be Mr. Gilmour and the alternate, Mr. Bush. So with those names, I would like to have a motion to accept. Thank you. Mr. Darrow? Mr. Bush? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. And that brings us to the adjournment of our organizational meeting. So I would request a motion.
Certainly.
Mr. Darrow?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kalanowski. Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. So we are adjourned. And now I will immediately call to order our January 6, 2020 work session. Request a roll call, please.
Mr. Gilmour?
Here.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Darrow?
Here.
President McCollum?
Here. We have already said the pledge, so we will dispense with that and move on to our meeting agenda. Any additions or corrections?
No.
Thank you. With no additions or corrections, I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Someone?
Ms. Kalanowski?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bush. Roll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. So that raises the discussion items, and our one discussion item tonight, Mr. Sawyers.
Thank you, President McCollum, members of Board of Education. Tonight I'm going to provide an update of the work that Ms. Jenkins and I have been doing in cooperation with Mr. Emery, Director of Elementary Education, and our three principals dominantly from primary, intermediate, and middle school. So Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Nowak, and Mrs. LeBeau, as well as conversations that we've had with the City of New Albany and conversations specifically with the PTO organizations that represent these three respective schools in relationship to the playground update and renovation that we're actually going to bring forth at the end of this month. So I'm going to give you background information and then lead you through the work that's been done over the course of the last really three months in the school district, prepared to get to where we are as our next opportunity. So let's start historical. So this is a overview map from an aerial shot of a drone image from, actually Google Earth, of the elementary, middle school, in this case, primary, intermediate, and middle school playgrounds, which is the three and a half acres that is in between the main section of our school campus that connects the elementary section of our district for students in grades one through six to the middle school for grades seven and eight. So this three and a half acres of play space is used on a daily basis and for all students in grades one through eight somehow, some way. The 1.4 acres in addition as part of that are green space specifically that's identified. So you can actually see where the current grass is, including the mud that actually shows in the satellite image for what's currently out there. And it's basically localized within the blue outline that's on your piece of paper. The installation dates I've tried to put on as an overlay, so the equipment ranges from 1999 to 2018 for the most recent addition that we actually did last year as part of an attempt to increase inclusive play opportunities for students on our school campus. So again, I said 3,000 students approximately, grades one through eight access this daily before, during, or after school. Our families and children do access a lot on the evenings and weekends. The playground is used really as a community resource and asset beyond just the school district. The play equipment again was installed from 1999 to 2018, has a life expectancy of 15 to 17 years based upon industry standards with routine regular maintenance. We do have annual safety inspections that are required to actually look at the playground equipment to ensure it's safe for play within our current school district for our students. Based upon the work that we've been doing with different vendors, we currently estimate there's approximately $117,213 of estimated repairs that are necessary on two specific sections dominantly of the play equipment that are over 20 years old that we're actually recommending refurbishment for. And we'll hear that in just a couple minutes. And we've met with vendors to verify. This all goes through a competitive state term pricing process. So the only thing that's really negotiable in a conversation is the installation costs. The price of the equipment is already purchased at state term pricing because of competitive bidding process within the state of Ohio that we benefit from this school district already. So I'm just going to take you through a couple of sections to understand the specific areas we're talking about on your maps and what we're actually proposing for refurbishment. This is playground section. We're just labeling number five. It's not my numerous numerical ratings. This is how it came back on the reports from the vendor that actually did the assessment specifically. So I'm just using their enumeration just for consistency. This was the center section that we actually installed last year for approximately $140,000 to increase inclusive play equipment, import in place rubber tile, to give greater accessibility for students that have mobility challenges within our school district. So it's the newest section on the playground itself. The southwest corner on your map was installed in 2014 when we actually built the new intermediate school. At the time, it was the K-12 Learning Center, but it has since become the intermediate school. That section's closest to be adjacent to the middle school, but it was the fourth quadrant of the playground that was actually completely asphalt. So there was a new section of play space added because of the number of students that were being added for grade levels for use on our school campus. So that's the 2014 section. It's now five years old, old, excuse me. Ironically, even though it's only five years old, there's two specific pieces of play equipment that we've already removed from this section because of change in code requirements and the distance for students to have mobility. There was a spinning apparatus that sat in the center of the playground that did not have six feet of distance for the diameter of the spin to let a student be released. The code requirements have changed, and that piece of equipment has now been removed. So now it just looks like a freestanding frame. There is no piece of equipment that's in the center of it because the code changed and said we were no longer allowed to use it because the industry standard had changed within the last five years. That was actually taken out just before school started this year. The northeast corner in 2008, this actually was removed and reinstalled from a different section of the playground based upon the age bracket of the play equipment specifically within the industry. So play equipment on the playground gets rated for a specific range of age that's appropriate for student play. So this is most appropriate for students that are at the primary going through really third grade. So it's rated for preschool through grade three, which fits the dominant range of students that are on that portion of the playground, having space in the northeast corner specifically for play. The southeast corner, this is the corner section closest to the McCoy Drive at the corner of the primary school to help you with proximity. So think about coming through the McCoy Loop, the first section of playground you see next to the primary school. That's what this is, the southeast corner. It was installed in 1999. It's original play equipment that actually came to the school campus during the construction process. Then what we're proposing, I'm just going to do these in specific sections. So this is the first section because it's now over 20 years old. It has significant disrepair necessary to meet all the code requirements. We're actually recommending this section be replaced this summer during capital work for 2020. This is an aerial view of the work with Midstate Recreation, formerly Play World.
This entire section.
This is an entire section, one whole section. That one quadrant that was labeled in the southeast corner. So this is an entire section. We're actually recommending for replacement. So that entire play set that was 1999 will disappear. We're actually recommending the whole section do disreplace. For your information, and I know that some of the wording is small, but we really did this to also post on our website to let families be able to have some understanding of what's being recommended to come to that section. But again, we have to think of the age of the students that are primarily in grade three or lower that have most access to this. So Play World, now Midstates Recreation, based upon industry standards, is actually recommending the installation of a quadra foil. That's the large piece of equipment there. And it's a result of conversations when we talk to kids, either through Mr. Emery or through the classroom, building principles with classroom teachers. When we talk to the kids, and really I'm going to tell you, this also applies to kids at the intermediate school and the middle school, the number one thing that the kids ask for on a playground is to climb. The second thing kids ask for is to swing. And the third most popular thing is to move. Now, when you ask them what move means, some of them will tell you to spin, some of them will tell you to go up and down, some of them will tell you that they want the ability to jump around on different types of equipment. So we use that information that we actually received from the kids and had conversations with Play World and went through their three different iterations of playground that ended up getting value engineered. So I'm going to tell you, the end result here is not where we started. Ms. Jenkins and I had several conversations with the industry partners to try to find the most cost-effective, yet great playground space to make it available for kids. So the first piece that's coming in for recommendation of the primary school section on the southeast corner is a quadra foil. It has a twist unit that comes with it that allows for rope climbing that you can actually see in some of the pictures. And there's an Otana bomb in the bottom corner. It looks like a T-top, so the top that actually spins is actually ADA accessible. So a student in a wheelchair can actually transfer to a seat on that device and still have the ability to spin just like a normal student would. So we looked at the equipment to try to discover ways to make sure that it can be inclusive in nature to meet all the mobility needs on our school campus for our kids. The next slide just shows you some other pictures of other pieces of equipment. Again, back to the movement piece. There's a butterfly seesaw. In my day, it was called a seesaw. Now it's called a butterfly seesaw because it has giant legs that look like a butterfly. There's an abacus that looks like the teeter totter, just a modern design for ultimately what it represents specifically. And then again, another angle view of what it looks like. I would tell you the one caution I would have, we have not confirmed color choices. So that's something we're waiting for the color palette to come back from Burr Liner. That's the manufacturer of the play equipment. So these are renderings from the catalog that Patty Hobson and Blake Hobson selected, specifically based upon aesthetics across the school campus, or cool colors that ultimately will hold over time. We're not married to the color. We're going to look at the color palette, but I had to have something for artistic illustration. The one thing that these playgrounds do include actually incorporates additional swing space. So when you actually look at the distance, one of our complaints we right now have at the primary school, and it's really the same with intermediate school and middle school, is there's a line for the swings. We're actually adding in totality across the entire play sets that are being replaced, 24 additional swings for student access. The swing bays now have 10 bays, and one will be ADA compliant to have accessibility for students with special needs for mobility purposes, specifically in sections that have port-in-place tile. For cost efficiency, we only put in rubber tile for accessibility under the main play spaces. The swing sets, much like we had done at the Early Learning Center, we maintain mulch and have incorporated sidewalks to encase the mulch to try to keep it into place, really to try to protect it. But for code requirements, the mulch, because of the swing pads that are used for students to mount or dismount the swing specifically once it's in motion, we put a rubber mat down for that to have it on top of the mulch. So it's still cost-effective to do mulch in those specific areas. But in the main play spaces with the large pieces of new equipment, we are recommending, much like we did at the Early Learning Center, the rubber tile to be put in place as a 20-year life expectancy, which is basically the same life expectancy for the equipment with proper maintenance. And again, provides greater accessibility. The other section that we're recommending be replaced is in the northwest quadrant. It's the section that's closest to the intermediate school gym and the intermediate school wing that takes you to the gym. It's on the corner over by the middle school cafeteria. So you can see the middle, or the intermediate school gym, the white building in the background of the picture. Again, this was installed in 1999. It's original equipment to this playground area. I will tell you, one of the major headaches on a daily basis of this piece of equipment is actually the enclosed slide. Our students, and I will be honest and tell you, it's dominantly sixth through eighth graders, think that it is absolutely fun to try to put 50 kids in the tube of that slide and jam them in there and not let people slide down the slide. So one of the games that are really safety issue that requires direct adult supervision so kids don't get hurt is to try not to jam kids into the enclosed space. So in the renderings that you're seeing for recommendations, there are no enclosed spaces in the proposed equipment that's actually being looked at for installation. This is an aerial view. Again, changes based upon age, specifically for students that have dominant access to it from the number of students that are playing on it. So again, we highlight the ability to climb. There's a DNA tower. It's approximately 18 feet high, is enclosed at the top, has all types of ropes that you actually can climb within, but there is a rope enclosure at the top that you cannot go through the top to climb over the side. So if you go up, you have to come back down based upon the design from Burr Liner for recommendation purposes. In addition to that, there's micro pods for climbing purposes, again, age-appropriate to meet their needs based upon our conversations with the playground experts and what they're recommending specifically for us to consider. Lastly, in this section, there's what looks to be like a climbing apparatus that actually moves. So it's the stair step ability, but they're not stairs. They look like rubber mats because that's what they are. And there's caterpillar looking, different types of dial things to actually step for utility stoppers or stoppers with the cosmic wrap. Again, all climbing stuff. When we look at what happens on a daily basis on the playground with our students that are older, again, dominantly in this case, sixth through eighth, but I will tell you, there's fourth and fifth graders that do the same thing every single day. They go out, they climb on top of our current equipment to see who can get up the highest, including on top of horse swing sets. It's just a game that the kids play every single day. They like to climb. It's just a game that the kids play every single day. They like to climb. We are recommending the addition of additional swings in this section because our older students still do like to swing. They do enjoy it. There's always lines specifically for the swings, and you can see the ported place illustration in this case. The red matting that's under that one section where the two swings are mobility, for students with mobility challenges for inclusive play on that section of the playground. Also on the middle school side and intermediate side, we have basketball courts, they're currently asphalt. We are recommending resurfacing the asphalt, we're working on securing the competitive bids for that. That will be done external from this process just because we can get better pricing than what's currently available to have the playground company do it themselves from asphalt work because we'll join the work with other asphalt replacement work that will happen across the school campus this summer. We are recommending all the basketball courts get resurfaced. We are recommending that the equipment be changed. One of the things the kids talk about is the backboard from the 1950s needs to go away. We need a real backboard, not one that's round, because backboards are not round. It's very interesting. But we're actually recommending replacing the backboards and actually just using paint, and that's something our staff will do once the asphalt is replaced, and actually just paint the basketball court so that on an annual basis we could actually refurbish them ourselves with fresh paint prior to the start of the school year. Because we can paint the basketball court. And we're not recommending installation of rubber basketball courts, that's not what I'm standing here doing. We will paint the basketball court, we will put the keys on in paint, and we'll do it on an annual basis for cost efficiency for our community. Again, in this area, we're talking about adding the rubber tile. Again, we've had great success with this at the early learning center, it's actually increased the amount of inclusive play for students with mobility challenges. It lasts 15 to 20 years based upon the age of life expectancy of the play equipment, and we will do that as well there. So the magic thing called money, so here's some numbers. We're just gonna start walking through sections of this, and again, this is through the state term competitive bid process to actually purchase the new equipment. I know people would be shocked by the cost of equipment, but this is not a wooden playset you're putting in your backyard. This is a commercial-grade play equipment that 3,000 kids have access to on a daily basis for 20 years. 178 school days times 20 years, lots and lots of play every single day. So, the playground equipment right now in state term is just under a million dollars. We've added the contingency, we have some asphalt work that we're projecting specifically that will get a third-party company to come in and do, but again, we still have to approve it. And then some group game stuff that we're still working out with different vendors. To talk about right now how foursquare gets reimagined into a new group play activity because there's other sections in asphalt that have group games that kids play. The most popular right now is the gaga pit. So we have approximately $1.1 million estimated cost just in the equipment and the installation and everything that comes with that. To date, for funding purposes, over the course of the last two years, Ms. Jenkins and I have known that this is a reality that's eventually going to happen. So we've been trying to figure out where this money's going to come from, and the good news is, we have money. It will come through permanent improvement. We have approximately $96,000 still available in bond residual from the building of the K-12 Learning Center, which is today Intermediate School. The $96,000 is dominantly interest income that has not been spent from that project. But this project for playground meets the scope of what was advertised for bond purposes and can be spent specifically to offset this cost. The Eagles Nest program, we talked about, we originally brought it to the school district for before and after-school care as well as our summer camp. We charge Eagles Nest rent for physical use of district space because not all our students benefit from the tuition-based program for before and after-school or summer care. So we've actually charged them rent to use our facilities. Over the course of the last three years, we have $250,000 that we specifically set aside to go back into things that would benefit kids because the money was generated by taking care of kids before school, after school, or during summer camp. So we intend to use it for permanent improvement purposes, in this case playground. We've also identified $39,000 that we received permission for from IDAB federal grant because it actually increases inclusive play opportunities for students. So we're trying to get more from the feds because we are extremely successful for that at the early learning center. You recall, we had over $100,000 that we got approved, but this is not a preschool playground that's specifically built for students with disabilities. So although there are students with mobility challenges that will benefit, right now we're limited to a $39,000 threshold. So we have $385,000 that we had previously identified, which will leave a balance due of $716,000 from the permanent improvement fund, specifically for the two quadrants of the four main quadrants on the playground. The other space that we've tried to look at is to how to expand outdoor learning opportunities in a community space to benefit our community as a whole, and as a whole. I've had three conversations, actually there's been more than that, but three very strategic focused conversations with members of the city of New Albany, trying to solicit their participation in helping us build a community space that would benefit our community as a whole because there is no central community playground per se in New Albany. Although Rose Run Park is coming, and it'll be an incredible asset resource to our community, it does not have large pieces of play equipment in it. There will be some play features that are built in the natural landscape that they've actually put into the park, but it's not filled with play equipment. Our playground will be the closest place for people to come and physically have play space. Based upon my conversations with the city, I've learned that there's about $30 million of other priorities that the city of New Albany has identified. So it's not that they don't believe that there's a benefit of this playground to our community, it's just that they have other priorities that city council, the mayor, and the city manager have had to prioritize. So I don't believe there's a city partner that's possible based upon my current conversations. So when we looked at the outdoor learning space, we came back to it as a school district and talked about, well, there's a significant benefit to this outdoor learning space that also beyond just benefiting our community, that also benefits our kids every single day. Provides expanded opportunities for outdoor learning specifically for classrooms. It has increased accessibility because of the concrete surfaces. It does provide shaded areas and outdoor shelters for students because students do take breaks or need access to something, so for sun exposure, to give them a break because some kids do ask for that. And there's a benefit in the end to our community at large during non-school hours and non-school days. So we went forth and tried to design what's the most cost-efficient solution that we potentially could put in place in this specific area. So this is an aerial view of what we're proposing in the green space closest to the intermediate school, middle school side of the playground. We'll still maintain two quadrants of green space, but we're actually recommending that the center portion actually becomes an outdoor learning space with two shelters that are approximately 43 feet wide each. They'll be equipped with fan and electricity specifically, and concrete underneath to make them completely accessible regardless of climate. So they're actually concrete underneath both. Gives you an aerial shot of what it would look like next to the main sidewalk that already exists. And you can see its proximity to the playgrounds in the back opposite the green space. And then additionally, some up close looking at the pipping tables, the park benches, and the different types of shaded areas that are there that we experimented with at the early learning center that are actually benefiting students and parents every day. When you look at this number, right now, the outdoor learning space is approximately $400,000. It's the recommended amount based upon our conversations with the vendor. We've added a line item, and I don't believe this will be done by the current vendor through Midstate Recreation, but I'm putting it in here to show total budget. We have an egress issue every single day for students that are walking back and forth from the primary school to the bus loop, and it's the bus depot. The sidewalk that's adjacent to the school building is only four feet wide. So we're actually proposing taking that four-foot sidewalk and expanding it to be 12 feet wide to allow the thousand kids that go back and forth from the primary school every single day to the buses to a traffic because right now they don't have that. So we walk in the mud, we walk anywhere we can walk because there's no sidewalk for all of them to fit on. So when they all move at the same time, it becomes quite a challenge to put that many kids coming out the exits onto a four-foot wide sidewalk. We're actually recommending expanding it to be 12 feet. The playground company gave us a quote of $60,000 in our conversations with Mr. Strickly, our coordinator of maintenance and operations. We believe because there's other concrete work that will happen this summer, we can add that to a package that bid on our own and get a more cost-effective solution for the school district. I'm putting it in as a worst case just because that's currently the number that I have from Playworld for Midstate Recreation to do it. We added the contingency line item just because we have this thing called a wetland adjacent to our school property. And when they start doing excavation, sometimes we find a thing called water. That's happened to us twice on projects, so we're just building in something in case something does happen because there's not a significant amount of drainage that's imagined in this project because we don't think it should be necessary. But to be safe, we're adding it. So we're approximately half a million dollars for the community section that we're proposing that would also benefit our kids. So outside the scope of the permanent improvement fund, we've been trying to find other people to participate in potential funding that could benefit the community at large as well as our kids. So the city of New Albany did offer us the opportunity, there's an AEP grant that they're actively participating to try to solicit. It's worth $40,000, and it's if 300 families within New Albany that currently have AEP as their provider will change their thermostat in their house to become a smart device that they actually could control to decrease energy efficiency. If 300 families would do that in New Albany, AEP will give the city a $40,000, or, excuse me, a $40,000 grant, not 400,000, $40,000 grant. When we checked just before Christmas, there were still over 100 people short in doing that. So although they've secured participation, they haven't met the required threshold. We did get information related to potential grant source in American Dermatology. It was $8,000, but after we investigated the grant, there's a one-year sunshade car program that's required. So you have to prove you have something in place that serves as a sunshade for students. And after one year, you're eligible for a grant up to $8,000 because you're decreasing sun exposure during peak times of the day. The last one is, I've had many, many conversations with PTO leadership from the primary school, the intermediate school, and the middle school. We've asked them to do targeted fundraising, so they do fundraising on an annual basis dominantly during spring semester, so the second half of our school year. And we've actually asked them, rather than taking the money that they would fundraise and use it externally, could they potentially help support this project within our school campus and help us raise $100,000 from the different types of events they do within their three buildings? They were very receptive, they can guarantee you that amount, but they're willing to actively participate and direct their fundraising efforts to be targeted to help offset costs potentially for the playground refurbishment because clearly they see the benefit to our kids. So the last thing we looked at, just because someone had asked us the question, and I didn't know the answer, so we said, well, let's find out what it is in case someone would ask us. Are the green spaces, so we're actually proposing, because of the amount of construction that will happen, the green spaces are going to be messed up. So the arrows illustrate sections that will have sod actually replaced. So there's a square footage tie that's proportional to the turf example at the bottom. So it'll cost us approximately $9,000 to install sod at the end of the project into the green spaces that will actually help us with drainage and mud issues versus turf. Because someone once upon a time said, we often get calls, kids get their shoes very muddy, depending on the time of the year, because our kids still play in the green space, they'll play soccer on a daily basis even if it's wet and muddy. So their shoes go home wet and muddy. Turf is not cost-effective, so we did give a cost just so you can understand proportion of what it would be. It's $130,000 to do one entire section of green space, and it's $228,000 to do all the green space into an artificial turf. Mr. Numan?
Just a question about the widening of the walkway, is that taken away from green space?
No, it's actually adjacent to the building. So it's not on the main playground space, it's actually up next to the school building. Where the bushes and the trees were that we just took out, that were done.
My fellow on this map, where, you don't understand where the outdoor learning space was, I was looking at some further.
It's right here in this section, so it's actually between these two arrows. That's why there's green here, green here, the proposed outdoor learning section is here where the number two is.
What type of activity takes place today in that green space?
It's, well, when it's not a mud pit, kids try to play soccer, but they'll play soccer here as well. We actually last summer replaced half of this section here with sod. So even though you see this aerial mud shot, this actually is the section that we actually put sod in. This was grass seed, this was sod. The sod actually has held much better for the students, but we still give them access. They'll play catch football in that other section. The dominant soccer field is this one, just because it has, there's a drain that sits where the number three is. We actually installed new drainage to help release the water when we put the sod in specifically. So over here, there's some catch football, same thing up here. We do have a soccer net that sits on this side, so we did install that at the beginning of the school year for the kids. We tried to direct soccer to this section because it's the section that actually has the best range. But again, we did the analysis just so we would understand, how much would it take to actually install turf? Turf is not cheap, turf is very expensive. It's not cost-effective for this school district to do that. We can buy the same amount of square footage for sod for $9,000 in comparison to what actually would cost to install turf. So overall, for the grand summary purposes, right now for next steps, we're working with the vendor for final logistics to basically get through the final product and all the color choices and everything else that have to happen. Our current track is that at the board meeting on January 27th, we would bring forth a recommendation for the total package of 1,621,309. So $1,621,309 is the current total. We are trying to value engineer a couple items where our staff might be able to assist with the demolition that could actually reduce the scope of the budget minimally. So we are tinkering with specific line items to get to a final number, but I'm gonna tell you it's approximately $1.6 million. We've identified $385,000 in existing funding that we've been saving from Eagles Nest, the bond residual, and the IDAB to use towards this, so it would still end up being approximately 1.2 from the permanent improvement fund. The one thing I would tell you, and Becky and I, when we first saw this number, it's a shock value because it's a big number. And it's two sections, two main sections of the playground, including the rubber tile and everything else that happens with it. You have to put in the context of, although there's capital outlay upfront because we have to pay for it, all upfront, in the context of 20 years, it's plus or minus $81,000 per year that we're spending for 3,000 kids to play every single day on playground space that basically makes up three and a half acres of that center section. So you have to put in the context of an annual expense of $80,000 to give that amount of play to all the kids. It's a 20-year investment, but yes, we have to pay for it upfront. But it is commercial-grade play equipment, it is not what's in your backyard. We did look at other parks throughout central Ohio, we've gone to several. The one in Gehanna is probably the one that we spent the most time at looking at the equipment. And again, from a price tag standpoint, when we talk to them, it's the same amount of money that gets spent because you're putting in commercial-grade equipment to last approximately 20 years. And again, this is two of the four main quadrants. The other two quadrants were 2008 and 2014. We are not recommending replacing them, there's some maintenance that needs to occur on them to bring them back up to code for things that have broken, which we maintained throughout the school year. But there's a couple things happening in the 2008 section versus some specific stairs that we need to specifically address before the next inspection because it was labeled. Are there any questions or comments that Ms. Jenkins can specifically answer? You know, it's a lot of information, Becky.
Two things just to add, just to note that with the outdoor learning area, we currently don't have any shaded area in that entire playground. So that's why we kind of thought that the shaded area was important. And then just to let you know that right now, we have just about $6 million in the permanent improvement fund.
Southwest quadrant, that's 2015, right? So is there anything from that quadrant that would stay?
None of that's going away, all that's staying. We're replacing the two sections that are 1999.
Oh, so the 2015.
Southeast and northwest are the two sections being replaced.
Okay, so where were the, I guess I was, maybe I was confused by the picture. Where will, you also mentioned on this side over here where the, next to where the basketball courts are, maybe there's going to be more swings.
Yes.
Would that be down in the 2015 area or is it still?
No, it's actually on the other side.
On the other side, okay, so it's split.
We're actually replacing the ones in that existing space, but we're adding new ones on the other side. We're actually increasing the number of swings accessible to kids. Right now, the number's 24. We had to get through final code approval to do that based upon square footage. And I don't speak all the code related to playground, that's why you have to validate that's liable to do that. They have to affirm that it needs. They have to affirm that it means all of the code requirements necessary for kids to have the amount of space from a sidewalk to have a mulch bed to actually leave the swing. So if you would fall off the swing, you have to fall off horizontal. And there's a specific code requirement for the amount of space that's required for you to fall.
So can you back up a few, or is that, that's the first one?
That's the original. So we're replacing these two sections that are nineteen ninety-nine, this one and this one. And we're recommending a community section comes in where number two is. Still maintaining green space on both sides, but a community center section and the two nineteen ninety-nine sections are what's actually being recommended for replacement.
There, okay, the last slide you have before you get to the accessibility section where you show the basketball courts.
That's over here by the middle school.
Yes.
And we're talking about redoing this as well.
Yes.
I'm not touching twenty fifteen, I'm not touching twenty oh eight, except maintenance.
Okay.
So there's some maintenance activities that need to happen here, and there's some maintenance activities that need to happen here. And we are trying to ask Play World, because the code changed, that one piece of equipment that sits in the center is now just a giant red arch. There's no play on it whatsoever, other than sliding up and down the pole. The pieces of equipment have been removed from that for play purposes because of changes in code. So we're recommending nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine, refurbishment of all the basketball sections, installation of the new section for number two for community space. And then I will add, because I left it out, we're adding a swing set here at the Ellen, or the primary school section. And the two basketball hoops that you might be familiar with next to the McCoy Loop, we're actually relocating over here to this section to be in the center so that when the kids miss the backboard, the ball goes into the grass for the courtyard between the building and does not go over the fence into the parking lot because they're not allowed to go get the ball. That happens every day. So we're relocating these two basketball courts to the center.
Do we have any expansion options for play space or for when we get voted, you know, in the center? My personal observations being that playground is, it's just so tight already in soccer games and flag is like a, you know, when they take the balls away, they get muddy and it's just, I don't want to fix it, they're like six million, one point six million, let's really fix it.
The only other place to go, Paul, is in between the courtyard at the primary school. The courtyard that exists is the U shape of the top of the primary school, there is green space in there. We have not put play equipment in there because it's adjacent to learning places for classrooms. So classrooms sit all the way around because this is the opening of the primary school building. So there's a green courtyard that sits in here that's three thousand eight hundred eighteen square feet approximately. But we have not put any play equipment in there, there are picnic tables. We let kids go in there, they eat lunch, they'll come out, they'll do science activities, they'll do experiments with their teachers. The outdoor learning gardens for the science classes are around here. But this green space, because it's surrounded by first and second floor classrooms, we have not put anything in there called a playground.
How about to the south, when we have the amphitheater in there, will they have existing space that we can fence off and utilize for our school district?
No, because the parking lot's adjacent to the amphitheater, there is no additional green space left.
And they're going to be using that for amphitheater and our parking lot?
Yes. And I need that parking during the student day, right now, we park approximately three hundred people in that lot every single day.
Is that part of our lease right now, is that covered?
The parking lot?
Yeah.
They have access to parking, it doesn't, I don't know if proportionate, it says the amount of parking, but it's to access parking on the school campus. But we park staff there. There is no additional green space in this section. We could go to the other side of the intermediate school and there's other green spaces that we could look at. The issue becomes the geographical distance for ease of leaving the four, approximately three and a half to four acres of green space. We have maximum on a typical day when two sets of grade levels are out, there's about seven hundred kids that come out proportionally to the playground. Dominantly, this side is primary, so if a primary classroom is out for a specific grade level, so if all of second grades at recess, the same time all of sixth grades at recess, second grade is limited to this side, sixth grade is limited to this side. So they're split by building based upon grade level. So the sixth graders do not come over to the primary side when a primary grade level is outside. They're localized, because the amount of square footage is about two acres, plus or minus, when you add the green space for each group, that takes approximately four hundred, three hundred fifty to four hundred kids at a grade level.
Is the covered learning space intended to be utilized while there is recess going on or will that be?
Not for classroom purposes during recess, I mean, it could be because it's just like using the solar house, kids do travel back and forth from there. I don't imagine a teacher's going to come out during prime recess time, but there's two and a half hours minimum in the morning and probably two hours in the afternoon that it could be used as outdoor learning space. I'm saying it couldn't be, but I don't think if there's three hundred fifty kids at recess, you're going to bring your classroom out.
And one free won't have access to that side, to that facility during recess?
I imagine we probably will have to come up with a way to identify if it's going to be used for learning purposes. It would be accessible to everybody on campus, including the high school technically if they wanted to come over. It's no different than the Flex Labs. So when the Flex Labs were built at the intermediate school specifically, that was meant to be through K through twelve opportunity. These two community spaces, we could put into FMX and check them out. It's just like we check out the Flex Labs now, with the exception of one, Mr. Cullenin's tech lab is used as a classroom, but the other five that are not are actually in FMX and teachers check them out. You actually go in the system and reserve it. We can make them reservable.
You said there was research done on climbing, moving, and swinging.
The two things the kids talk about the most are climbing and swinging. Swings are a daily frustration because there's not enough of them. But the square footage required is a challenge because we maximize the space that we have available with as many swings as we possibly can hold on the current space. And we've asked them to do that, we actually kept adding swings to the point where they said you can't put any more in because you're not allowed. It won't meet the code requirements. But our kids get very frustrated that you stand in line to swing. But we are adding at least twenty-four more, which is a significant improvement.
The other piece that strikes me is again, I'm not there every day like our team is, but there is not as much team sport activity going on with soccer and football and, yeah, there's, there's this flag game, but it seems like it just, four kids swinging against each other.
Right, it's not structured play from the standpoint that we're paying competitive soccer team game, no, that's not it. It's just, it's a pickup game, same thing with flag football or something where you went. It's just a pickup game the kids are participating in because they get distracted and then they go to the gaga pit. Or they go to the swing set because one opened up and they'll jump out of the gaga pit and they'll run to the swing. Happens every day, so they run around, I mean, that's the other thing. They're not really all using the equipment the entire time that they're out there, there's a lot of kids that just run around.
As you said, this is likely to be the community playground now that the amphitheater is adjacent to Rosewood Park. Will there be blocking it and dodging it for our students?
During the student day, it would not be accessible to the community, it's no different than our current use from my standpoint. After school and in the evenings and on the weekends, I think it's accessible just like it is today. But during the student day, we close the gates, we do not let people in, we have adult supervision in all the playgrounds and we do not let them, they're not open to the community for community play.
And the city hasn't offered maintenance or have you been real to that?
No.
Are we responsible for maintenance to parking lots if they're being used in community?
Yes. It belonged to us. So I did attempt, to the point where you're going, to have very structured, deliberate conversation with the city. So I see that there's an inherent benefit because there is no community playground. But again, I got the list back of all the other things the city is doing to try to help the school district from an economic standpoint, the priorities that they have. So, I mean, we've had very constructive, productive conversations and they don't disagree that there's a huge benefit, it's just right now, not at the top of their priority list.
The other question I had is, I was not on the board when there was a, understand a large donation to donate stonework to really make that intermediate building very aesthetically pleasing.
Yes.
And it just strikes me as this, this is something that really ought to be part of a community plan that's now tying the business district, the park, to the school district. And that is effectively the oval at Ohio State or the quad at, at Miami University or, you know, the architecture of Virginia where you were three years ago, where's the rest of the plan, that would be my question. Because I, aesthetically, having a bunch, I know you mentioned just for demonstration purposes, but to have the opportunity to have this beautiful campus, stonework on three sides, and then to really have to jam ourselves in there, arguably restricted, evidently because of the amphitheater coming in. Yeah, it just feels like it's one of these where, I know, and I, trust me, I know you made significant efforts and have not had the best feedback relative to their participation or involvement, but it just feels like before I would go ahead with a million six. You know, aesthetically, from a functionality perspective, from a, you know, not having, talk about inclusive play, to me, that's team sports. This shrinks it because we got to put those learning centers in there. It just feels like there's got to be some more collaboration, but I know we can only take the horse to water, we can't make the drink.
And you're welcome as the city liaison to attempt to have additional conversations beyond my success.
I understand.
Uh, just to follow up on, I'm sorry. The, you know, Paul makes the point about the outdoor learning space and whether or not it's needed so that there's extra use for sports activities, whatever. What, what was some of the thinking behind deciding that you wanted to add that versus keeping it green space?
Shaded opportunities for kids right now, because we've taken out the trees that were, that they were. Kids will look for areas to go to for shade, they'll sit in the bushes for kids that don't want to be in the sun for the twenty minutes that they're outside. So it sounds like it's not a long time, but for some kids, they don't want that. From some of our special needs students within our school district, we look for those opportunities to give them limited sun exposure to meet their needs based upon what we're trying to do to make sure that they have inclusive play opportunities with their, like counterparts on our playground. So when we looked at it, it was an extension of outdoor learning space that could actually be used beyond just the playground. So it is an extension, I mean, from a standpoint that with the benches and the picnic tables and such, the steel equipment that we've actually forecasted to be within those areas as an opportunity that would also benefit our kids, but also at the same time benefit families on the weekend because it does give back to the community. Because families come and play on the playground, the moms, the dads that come and watch their kids play on the place, that's what have a place to go. And yes, it would give them some shade area that would also benefit our kids during the week, but also could benefit them on the weekend. So we've tried to look at it in a multifaceted, multi-use approach. And in conversations with Play World and really visiting the other parks that we went to, it was a dominant feature that actually was very well-used in all the times that we went to the park and actually saw people at the park. The adults and kids, and it wasn't just adults, but kids were also in those spaces. So we tried to look at it holistically, is this an opportunity to make a greater improvement? Which was my angle of initially going after the city, and Paul's aware of that because of our conversations on other areas of stuff that we've talked about throughout the campus. When I first approached the city to say, I really think this is a unique opportunity to partner with the school district. And again, they don't disagree that there is a benefit, but there are some that would argue that this is our fiduciary responsibility because it is our playground. I was told that. And then there's others that will say, again, we see the inherent benefit now into the school district, but also to our community. But again, there's other priorities that we're responsible for at the same time for other things that the city council, the mayor, and the city manager are currently dealing with on a daily basis.
So, well, just. So two things then, how much, how much of that square footage is lost by the addition of the, you know, generally?
That in the section number two?
Yeah.
Probably fifty percent of that space, so it's ten thousand square feet plus maintenance.
And then, this is probably more than we would want to do, but all of the asphalt spaces, I'm guessing they're heavily used? There's no asphalt space that could be converted into green space?
We've talked about taking some of the sections up here at the primary school and adding additional swing space for kids. But again, that gets into code issues because you're expanding, because we'd have to do it on the side that we're actually replacing and we can go back and revisit it. But we had talked about adding additional swings. Play World or Midstates Recreation came back and they actually added them here. We were taking the basketball nets out and relocating them. Because of the proximity of what's happening with the other construction, it was more cost-effective to put swings here than it was to put swings in the asphalt area.
Like, well, he's talking about green space and what I would say is that asphalt area is also a rehab, the gaga pits that the kids get into and play. That's on asphalt, that's not in green space. And then there are other games that are like painted, floor square and pop scotch and that kind of stuff that the kids use as well. So that's why that would remain asphalt, not turn into green space.
So unlike, okay, so this, so unlike people waiting in line for the swing sets, you don't have a bunch of kids that are?
I don't have kids waiting in line to play soccer, I don't have kids waiting in line to play football. I, I don't. I understand it, but I don't.
I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm.
The kids are waiting in line to climb and swing. Two main things. You can play soccer, you may not get to play immediately, but you can still play. And it goes back to, we talked to Midstates Recreation and looked at the types of equipment that are being recommended. It's a well-rounded approach to try to meet the needs of all students and give them access to different types of things that they're asking for. There are other places we technically could go for green space access. I mean, we have fields on six oh five, it becomes a supervision issue for time of travel to and from and an adult issue that we're then spending personnel, because I have to hire more lunch aids to be visible with those kids. Right now, they're all within the four acre space, I'm not taking them to a separate field. Then I would have to work out, and we could talk about that, there's a personnel cost that would come with it because I have to increase personnel to do it. But then I have to look at on the academic side, what's the instructional impact for the well-meaning classes? Because those teachers use those because not every kid's at lunch at the same time. So while these classes are outside, it's specific times of the year that use those green spaces. It's a giant jigsaw puzzle and we've looked at it from a lot of angles to try to come up with what we believe to be the best solution for kids.
I certainly share Paul's obvious frustration with the city's reluctance to get involved in something that is a, will be a community asset. So I'm not sure what else we can do. The folks who said it's the school's responsibility, I suspect if, if we were to say that it'll be locked during non-school hour, it might have a different opinion.
Turn parking for non-resident residents?
It is a taxpayer asset, so it belongs to all taxpayers. But that, it is pretty frustrating because it's, it just, it seems to be something that should be on the agenda. Also, just from a design point of view in terms of aesthetics, how long are those green spaces? What's the length, do you know roughly? Don't give me an exact number, just a estimate.
No, I don't know if that answers.
Would it make sense from a symmetry point of view, I hate to get into design elements here, to have a enclosed space on, at the end of each one of them instead of just being on one side?
We did have that conversation and part of it went back to the economics of the cost of doing the concrete in one area versus two separate for the excavation, there was a difference in cost. So we can go back and have that conversation from an aesthetic perspective, but we did discuss it.
I can make too many deals, but just, yeah, the drawing was a good.
Because one of the other options was, instead of doing two shelters, do one shelter to reduce the budget. But we currently left two in because we think that once they exist, they will be readily used.
I think, I think you made a very good argument for why they'll be used. And I, I also like the idea of having them on each side because then it's close to the play areas on each side. I can't imagine the cost to split them into two pieces is meaningful.
The only other thing I would see that's problematic with that, and I think it's part of our conversation, when you look at number three, which is dominantly the soccer field, if you put that in the center, so there's one in number two and one in number three, you've cut the soccer field in half.
I wouldn't put it in the center, put a lot of it.
Does, does the same supervision issue result with the, the learning centers? Or can we use the amphitheater space for learning, covered proportionally, so there's some element that could be incorporated?
I haven't seen the final design that's been value engineered, I don't know what still exists at the amphitheater.
Or even using the amphitheater itself, I suppose. And then secondly, is there any space for the learning centers or if it's not a supervision issue, it might be next to the environmental center in the north?
The green space directly next to the solar houses are his district property, it's currently the football property scale for the middle school. The space behind it is not ours, that belongs to the city that we leased proportionally to- It was proportionally the same lease agreement that we just did with the amphitheater was how we get access to that green space off the curvaceous field because that's not our property, belongs to the city.
Is it multiple access?
You wouldn't be able to put a playground up there.
It was too time, we'd have to hire more people. It's a supervision issue as well. And then really, there's time lost in proximity for the kids going to lunch because they flip, half the grade level goes to recess, half the grade level goes to lunch. Not, 450 kids don't go to lunch at the same time. They're at lunch at the same time, but it's lunch slash recess. You flip halfway through.
It has to be close. I mean, it has to be a minute, one minute, two minute long.
I mean, it is three and a half acres of play space. People are actually surprised by that, too. Like, when we do tours of other schools coming to see the building, because that still happens on a routine basis, they're surprised at the size of the playground. They think it's very large compared to theirs.
Michael, I'm just wondering, has, has this specific equipment been installed in other schools? And, and we've gotten feedback on it?
Yes. I can't tell you the names of the schools off the top of my head, but yes.
But all positive?
No, there's really nothing glaringly negative. Our biggest concern is actually the height of the tower and making sure that it was enclosed at the top. Because the first version we saw actually was not enclosed. You were able to go up and come over and it still met the code requirements. And that didn't sit with any of us. We're like, we don't think so. So that's something we have looked at. The tower's been the main topic of conversation.
How high is it?
18 feet.
Wow.
But if you go to the Park in Kahana, you see one that looks very similar to it that has kids all over it.
And you are getting different color palette options.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just wanted to say.
It's for rendering purposes. We have not seen the color palettes. I don't know what they look like. It could end up being fluorescent green and orange. I don't know. If you go look at the ELC, it has all kinds of color.
So just then, from a budgetary standpoint, it's likely then 20 years from now, it's going to be a pretty hefty chunk of money to replace all of this. I'm guessing.
But it's really not 20 years from now. This is really two sections. 2008's going to hit, and 2028, that's eight years away.
But yes, these two sections.
These two sections. But for this entire playground, in the next 15 years, there will need to be local replacements that is going to start.
Well, it goes back to, it's, it's the maintenance of our school campus because the school campus is aging. There's going to be an annual investment required to maintain the capital assets across the school campus, including the play spaces. That's the reality.
So are we thinking about doing what we've done with the football field and start taking a hundred thousand dollars a year and putting it into?
It's been a conversation. So Ms. Jenkins and I are in the process about updating the capital improvement plan to give you a new version that would show you a forecast of the next five to 10 years now that we've done some roof replacements, some boiler replacements, some lighting retrofitting to actually update those plans to try to look out to the future and come up with what is that number that we would be recommending that you start building? Because we shouldn't wait until 2028 and say, we didn't know that section of the playground was going to have to be replaced. It's going to have to be replaced in 2028.
Have we thought about naming rights?
We have. It's been a topic of conversation. But given our current success so far on the stadium that we've tried to go to market on, we haven't offered the playground. So we're still actively seeking average, expansion of advertisement rights specifically for the stadium.
Not a lot of success?
Limited. However, for public purposes, if there's someone that would like to advertise on our playground, I would be interested in speaking with you.
What's the feedback been that, do people want something permanent?
The perpetuity conversation has been there. And then there's also a shock value associated to the dollar amount that were requested. So they think it's expensive.
We're open to proposals.
We have one that has made a counterproposal that we're trying to get additional information for. But it is significantly less than what the request was for. Maybe a third of the asking price, as an example.
Education's expensive.
It is.
Ignorance is more so.
Other questions or comments? Again, if you have questions or comments in the course of the next two weeks, I would strongly recommend you reach out to Mayor Miss Jenkins. We're currently on schedule to bring this forth at the end of the month. If we do not order equipment in early February, it will not be here for summer installation. We've been told that flat out. It's physically not possible. Our installation window is the last day of school, as soon as students leave, to the day before school starts in August. That's the installation window. And there is a significant amount of work that's in this scope. It's going to be tight no matter what we do. We cannot have a delay, but the equipment does not arrive.
So one thing that I'd like to see over the next couple of weeks, if possible, is whatever the proposed maintenance would be to really spit-shine the existing facilities, repair, get the sod replaced, you know, maybe there's an annual cost to that. But to understand what our alternative is if we don't go forward with the large spend right now. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't get behind it. I just feel like there's, do it within two weeks, given where we are and some of the questions that are out there. I'd like to see if there's an alternative. And I know that we've got a summer scheduled to think about. But like I said, I want to solve the problem.
So, Mr. Jimoff, I'll just tell you. Minimally, it's $117,000 to bring up repair with repair code requirements that have currently been identified, and $9,000 per sod. So if we leave all the existing equipment and try to bring it back up to code for August inspection, and again, we invest it, and then it's got to go through the inspection process. If it fails, it will be closed. Because it has to pass inspection to be open for students for the first day of school. So right now, I would tell you it's approximately $127,000 minimum.
And at what point does the 1999 sections?
They're telling us right now they both need to be replaced.
We have an opportunity to promote participation. And no one has submitted, so we will move along. Our next item is superintendent's items. So I have a motion on superintendent's items, 5A. Dara? Skalniewski? Mr. Short, just a second.
Board of Education members, 5A's for personnel action items for resignations and/or hiring based upon actions that have occurred since your last Board of Education meeting. Letter B this evening is to approve field trips for science and lit. As well as the purchase of buses that have been planned for within the improvement funds of the school district that are currently available on the lot. And we've tried to negotiate the best price possible based upon the existing fleet and replacement schedule. Any questions?
What do we do with the buses that are?
Are they traded in or do they go to salvage? Depends on the number, amount of mileage and the actual condition of the bus.
Well, we tend, we tend to drive these things until?
We have several buses well around 50,000 miles. Two of the ones that are being replaced are on like 200,900 miles. And it's really not the engine so much as the body that is rusting out. So we're welding, and that's the part that doesn't pass inspection by the Ohio Highway Patrol.
We will offer them for a public sale before they go to salvage because most of the junkyards will just give us $500. We'll see if somebody wants to do more than that. But if you take it to the junkyard, you're getting $500.
I have a few questions. Someone might want to turn it to an RV or something.
Actually, nurseries have purchased them in the past. You actually cut the frame of the bus seats off and you just have the bed for the actual frame and use it to drive nurseries down the road.
Okay.
We do not. But if you would like one, contact us and we'll talk about a great deal.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice President Dara?
Yes.
Ms. Skalniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Nima?
Yes.
President McCallum?
Yes. That brings us to adjournments.
Under kidding, we just adjourned.
Just a second.
Dara, Mr. Bush, roll call, please.
Vice President Dara?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Skalniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Nima?
Yes.
President McCallum?
Yes. We are adjourned.
Thank you.